Hello, Joanne, Karen, Martin. Janet, let me know when you're ready. And Gunner is no longer on my screen.
Yeah, he stepped out for just a second.
Okay. Oh, there he is. I'm sorry. I'm just looking at his office. Commissioner Muller, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good, thank you. Commissioner Polly, welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you. So it looks like we're just missing Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Cho. Janet, I'm ready whenever you are.
I am ready now. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 15th meeting of the City Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Carson. I am the Chair of the City Planning Commission. Want to welcome, again, welcome you all here tonight. Want to make a few introductions of those people that are on the call this evening. First off, we have Commissioner Karen Jones, who serves as the Vice Chair of the City Planning Commission. We have Gunner Hand, who is the Director of the Land Use and Urban Planning Department, along with Janet Parker, who's the Executive Assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. Byron Toy is also here with the Unified Government Planning Staff as well. Martin Tangier with the Public Works Engineering Department, and Patrick Waters with Unified Government Legal Counsel. We have the following Planning and Zoning Commissioners present tonight: Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Susanna Polly, Commissioner Nathan Reasons, Commissioner Joanne Huey, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, and Commissioner Jake Miller. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to Secretary Parker, who will read the opening statement for tonight's meeting.
We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. Due to the COVID-19 crisis, the members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Planning Commission members use the Raise Your Hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse or if you need a personal break, use the Raise Your Hand feature. For those in attendance, use the Raise Your Hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The Chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak, unmute your microphone, and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you have called in by telephone only, or if you are having trouble logging into the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@wiko kck.org, as Secretary Parker is monitoring that email. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly may be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens, which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, April 8, 2021. For final class and final plane reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case. The 15 minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the Planning Commission may, by two-thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will then be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Urban Planning and Land Use Department at planninginfo@wiko kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda. Items on the consent agenda are final plans, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the Chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the Raise Your Hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff recommendation. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the Commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision. In addition, those who receive notices for this evening's hearing will again receive them for the hearing on Thursday, April 8, 2021. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Special use permit application, SP 2021-009, James Donovan with the showroom floor LLC. Renewal of a special use permit for an Airbnb at 1127 Southwest Boulevard. Special use permit application, SP 2021-010, Kelly Fountain, renewal of a special use permit for a kennel at 3440 North 131st Street. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the Commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
Mr. Chairman, please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated March 8, 2021, the application of their documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant, inference of the case and contained in the official file, the publications in the echo, and the notices to property owners. The Commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Janet. Are there any Commission members? Is there any item on the agenda that you would like to see removed for special consideration? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have something removed from the agenda this evening? Excuse me, from the consent agenda for special consideration. At this time, please use the Raise Your Hand feature. Okay, I'm not seeing any staff. Is there anything that you would like to have removed?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Staff would like to request that SP 2021-010 be removed from the consent agenda, please.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
I move we approve the consent agenda minus the case that staff wants to take off, which is SP 2021-010.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and by Commissioner, excuse me, motion made by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Commissioner Armstrong, there you go. Thank you.
Ernst.
Aye.
Huey.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
Reasons.
Aye.
Is, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Miller on here with us yet?
Yes, yes, I'm an aye.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the one remaining item on the consent agenda passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
We will now go to the one item that was removed from the consent agenda by staff. Special use permit application, SP 2021-010, Kelly D. Fountain, renewal of a special use permit for a kennel at 3440 North 131st Street.
Okay, thank you. Kelly Fountain, I have you unmuted and ready to speak. Could you go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about your project here?
Okay, my name is Kelly Fountain, and my address is 3440 North 131st Street in Kansas City, Kansas. And I am asking that my special use permit be renewed for 10 years. I currently am running a kennel at this address, and I have runs for 10 dogs. Are there any questions that anyone has for me?
Any questions for the applicants? I just have a couple. Do you only, do you only take dogs, Ms. Fountain, or do you, other animals?
I only take dogs.
Okay. And are these, are the animals dropped off at your property, or do you, do you pick them up? How is that handled?
The owners of the pets drop them off.
Okay.
And then pick them up, of course, when the boarding time is finished.
Okay, and what are your normal operating hours?
I open at 8:00 AM, and I open until 1:00 PM. Then between 1:00 and 3:00, I close. And then I reopen at 3:00, and I close for the evening at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, well, the public portion of the meeting, is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comments. Director Hand?
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Wanted to pull this off of the consent agenda as, over the last year or so, we've been applying standard conditions for these types of home occupation S U Ps that didn't make it into the summary conditions. So we would ask that the Planning Commission, we do recommend approval. We'd ask the Planning Commission in their motion to approve would add two conditions. One, as was just noted, that marks hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and another one that would note that there are a maximum three off-street parking spaces provided for this business on this property. Otherwise, there were no notices of violations. There was one letter in support. We received no letters in opposition. We do have some other standard conditions, like no signage for similar types of S U Ps that were in support of. We just wanted to get those other two on the, on the books, as this is going to be a 10-year, is proposed to be a 10-year renewal.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the director? Commissioner Jones.
Director Hand, could you repeat the last one with regard to off-street parking? I didn't hear part of that for the spaces.
There will be three, a maximum of three off-street parking spaces provided for this, for this project, for this use.
Got it.
I got her. I have one question. Is there any type of requirements, whether it be through, I don't know if it's Health Department or through Animal Control, that kennels must, that any animals taken to kennels must have, must be current on their shots, things like that? Or is that even a, even a thing?
Oh, I'm sure it's a thing. I'm not 100% sure about our animal, what our animal licenses are, though. I can double-check. Our zoning enforcement officer was in Animal Control previously, so that should be a quick question.
Any other questions for the director? I'm going to go back to the applicant, Ms. Fountain.
As far as the vaccinations required, the Department of Agriculture has always required rabies, distemper, parvovirus, and bordatella. And proof of those vaccinations are always required prior to a dog staying. And in addition, I ask that they have the leptosporosis and the canine influenza vaccination.
All right, thank you very much for that information. Commissioner Jones.
Just have a quick question for the petitioner. Is most of your business repeat? And whether it's repeat or not, these vaccination requirements, any other requirements, do you, every time somebody comes to you, restate what the requirements are?
Oh, absolutely. We require that everything be current at any time the pet stays. And usually, what will happen is either the people will bring the vaccinations in, or their veterinarian will email the vaccinations to us, or we will call the veterinarian to make sure that the vaccinations are current. If the vaccinations are not current, we do not accept the pet.
Very good, thank you.
Any further questions for the director? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Oh, excuse me, I've got one more. Commissioner Miller.
Well, it wasn't a question. I was just going to make the motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve subject to the stipulations in the staff report, including keeping the hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM and a max of three off-street parking spaces.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Miller. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion on motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Huey.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Polly.
Aye.
Reasons.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit, subject to the revised conditions, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Janet, will this be heard before the B O C C?
Both of these special use permits will be, yes.
Okay, so this will be heard once again on April 8th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that completes the consent agenda, and we will now move on to the non-consent agenda. Our first item is change of zone application, COZ 2021-001, James B. Evans, change of zone from AG Agriculture District to R1 Single Family District for a single-family home at 1825 North 94th Street. Please include the following items as part of the case for this record, I'm, for the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated March 15, 2021, the application of their documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant, inference of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, are you in the audience, or is there someone in the audience representing Mr. Evans? If you would, please raise your hand. Mr. Evans or his representative, if you're in the audience tonight, would you please raise your hand, and I'll, I will recognize you.
Mr. Chairman, I did get an email from him, and he was having trouble getting on the call. I think he had the wrong link. I sent it to him, but I don't see him on here yet.
Okay, can we go ahead and move this to the bottom of the agenda? Janet, you're back on mute.
Ms. Parker, you're on mute still.
I'm sorry. He has his next application, so we'll also move that one and move on to change of zone application, COZ 2021-003, Carol Blackwell, change of zone from R1 Single Family District to AG Agriculture District for agricultural purposes at 3505 North 83rd Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated March 15, 2021, the application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant, inference of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Ms. Blackwell, I've got you queued up to speak. If you could start off, please, give us your name, your address, and then tell us about your project.
I'm Carol Blackwell. I presently, do you want my address for where I presently live, or where?
Yep, yes, please.
Okay, 8007 West 153rd Terrace, Overland Park, Kansas.
Thank you. Go ahead and tell us about your project.
Okay, I'm really wanting the, the three-car garage for equipment, which is my tractor and a bush hog, and it has then a snow blade on the front of it. There's over 1,000 feet, linear feet of driveway that I'm going to have to clear from snow and so forth. There's, there's various pieces of equipment that will, it's 19 acres up there. That's just north of Leavenworth Road, about a half a mile. It's on the east side of the road. It's very, very private, very secluded up there. I've got the water line in. I have the electrical line paid for, and they've cleared the trees to put the poles in and to run that electrical. They're scheduled to dig the foundation for the house on the 22nd, which is next week. And I'm working on all of those contracts. Basically, the barn will be strictly for my hobbies. I'm an older lady. I've worked very hard. I owned a home health company and sold it. It provided me with a nice retirement, and I'd like to pursue my hobbies. I've worked very hard. Six days a week, eight and 10-hour days for quite a few years now. I'm a nurse, and I would like this barn to pursue my hobbies. I like to make wooden furniture for myself. I don't sell any of it, haven't sold any at all. We'd like to put beehives. We understand that we, from Mr. Owen, Paula and Ivan Owen, really nice people to talk to, own OBs, and they have quite a large beehive business going. And my son is very knowledgeable, would like to increase the bee population. He feels very strongly about it, and I have said, yes, indeed, let's do that. So we'd like to start out with about three beehives with the recommendation of Mr. Owen, and we're going to go interview this next week with another man to get the hives ordered. We're hoping then to get at least one, and you may even be able to put two per acre. We are rototilling any piece that we can actually till, which is not a whole lot, but we're putting in white clover, and we're putting in a lot of wildflowers that attract birds, butterflies, and bees. So we're, we're quite excited about it. We think it's going to help rebuild the bee population that's been devastated. It was a tough winter for them.
I wouldn't worry about that. The things we do for our kids, right? Okay, any questions for the applicant from the Commission? Seeing none, we'll go to the public, well, the public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comments. Excuse me, I've got a, I've got a hand up. Elaine Cross, I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Elaine Cross. My address is 3530 North 80th Street. And I oppose this.
Okay, do you have any, anything you want to make us aware of for your opposition?
Just discrepancies in what has been said is going up there and just the sheer size of the structure.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? I see a hand up on, no, sorry. Is there, is there a question from the Commission? Commissioner Jones.
Wanted to ask Ms. Cross about her opposition is still specific, more specific in terms of petitioner said that it's somewhat out of sight and discreet. Can you see it from your property, or can you be more specific about your concern, please?
Ms. Cross?
Yeah, my property is just to the be that there, it borders, there's a tree line that's between it. I'm not 100% sure, but given the plans that have been submitted, I do believe I'll be able to see it from my property. Right now, we just have, obviously, some acreage up there, and there is pretty much one, and my concern is that I'll be able to see that from the property.
Commissioner Jones?
Ma'am, and so, did you say you're on 80th Street? Was that your street address?
That's correct. It's 3530 North 80th Row, and the, my property is about seven acres right there, and then it's going to set up to the east quarter of this property.
And what is it that you're concerned specifically about seeing that, that you don't want to see?
Just the structure itself. I think it should be a two-story barn that has like offices and stuff upstairs, as it were in the plan. And I think I'll be able to see that through my tree line or from above the tree line. I have a two-story residence there right now, but right now, I can see in all directions.
So ma'am, is the size of the building that you're concerned with as opposed to the building itself?
The size of the building is the concern, correct, along with the discrepancies in the planning. I think the original plans that were submitted have some offices upstairs, though, and there's been a little explanation for the offices, the conference room, and what the building is actually made for will be.
And one last question for now, ma'am. Have you had communication with the petitioner, Ms. Blackwell?
We have. We've to the neighborhood, we do, and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wants to speak in favor of or opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comments.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Ham, Director of Planning and Urban Design. You all recall that in January, this property was heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals for variance. It's currently zoned R one. The variance was for a accessory structure larger than allowed by code. That variance was denied. Ms. Blackwell has, has submitted another application for this property for a change of zone that would, from R one to A G. If granted, would remove the requirement for a certain sized accessory structure. So the plan is still to build a relatively large barn and single family home. I'd just like to point out that although they're associated with this bone, with this entitlement, the actual construction and, and, and of the house and the accessory structure are still held to height requirements and other requirements. So there really isn't, the, the barn isn't in front of us today. The change of zone is. Now again, they're somewhat related because essentially we're going through a change of zone to remove the restriction of an R one, which limits the size of an accessory structure. But that accessory structure still cannot exceed the height limit in an agricultural zone, which is the same height limit as an R one zone. So I just wanted to clarify that point really quick. There was definitely some confusion in that previous Bozeman case as that, if you recall, the site, the floor plans for that accessory structure did bring into question whether that would be for commercial uses or not. Staff worked with the applicant and developed a condition of approval, very similar to other conditions, that does not allow commercial activity on this property. It is a nineteen plus acre site. If you all, if you all recall, any property, whether it's zoned R one or agricultural, regardless, over three acres does not need to match materiality of the primary structures. So this could be a house with a regular looking pole barn to it, if you will, if approved, moving forward. So just a couple of clarifications there. There were no NOVs on the property, although there has been some citations recently. The construction site has been letting, especially with the recent rain, has been letting a lot of dirt and debris out on the public right away. As such, staff would, we do recommend approval, but we would ask to amend that with your motion to include some additional conditions of approval. One, we'd like to add two standard conditions. These were just not included in this staff report. They were included in the Bozeman, they should have carried over, so I apologize for this typo. But we would ask that the standard condition for land disturbance permits, for driveway permits, and we already have the one in there for building permits. But the, the one for, again, land disturbance and driveway permits be added. Those are just kind of more of an awareness thing that as Ms. Blackwell were, if she were to move forward, or even if not approved tonight and were to move forward, continue to move forward with her house, just to be aware of, of those permit processes that are out there. We've been adding those as standards over the last nine months to a year. And then additionally, we would ask that a, a third condition of approval be added to provide an erosion control plan for staff to mitigate the, the flow that's happening out of her driveway onto the public right away. Erosion control plan, once submitted, can be reviewed by engineering. They can go out there and they control and they can make sure that this doesn't happen moving forward. Basically, we just want to make sure that she's keeping the road clean and, and the dirt and debris from, from going into the public right away. So with those three conditions, which again, there was a lot there, so I'm happy to answer questions. But with those three conditions, we do recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Questions for the Director, Commissioner Reasons?
Yes, Gunner, I do have a little bit of a concern. Where she's asking for, get her property zoned agriculture. And it sounds like she's throwing the bees in there just to, to get it, to be able to zone agriculture. Because I, I would think if we're going to zone someone's property for agriculture, it needs to be used for that, not just for the woodworking shop. And, and that's a concern to me because is this gonna set a precedent to anybody that says, well, I, I want a couple kitty cats? So I want my property zoned agriculture to help with other things so I can build whatever I want to. Is this gonna start setting that kind of precedent in the future?
Well, I would say two things. I think globally, outside of this case, there were a lot of properties that were formerly agricultural when incorporated that just became R ones. I mean, the entire Sorder Drive neighborhood was agricultural and we've slowly been turning that over, very similar to this neighborhood, essentially everything north of Leavenworth. And I would say west of, you know, loosely, west of four thirty five, we're, we're always zoned agricultural. Many of them were not farms necessarily. They were just land that, large tracts of land that people live on. Again, residential uses are all in agricultural zones. You are allowed to use an agricultural zone, a piece of property for just a residence. So we think that based on the size of this property and the uses, again, that we would recommend approval. But the difference between R one and A is, is essentially you can build much bigger accessory structures and you can build multiple accessory structures. And that is why Ms. Blackwell is pursuing a change of zone.
Okay, thank you.
Gunner, just for clarification, you don't have to have livestock or animals or anything like that for a property to be zoned or to be able to fall under that category or to get that categorization, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ernst?
Gunner, for this and other cases that we run across, could you review for the the steps we can take if it ends up going for a business use? And that's always the concern when it's big and maybe questionable. Would you run through the steps we can take to stop that? And maybe it would allay some of the fears of them doing something different?
Sure, so again, hypothetically, if approved tonight, and it was rezoned agricultural, and if it was found out through zoning enforcement action, or neighbors tipped us off and we were able to go out there and, and see it in, in person for commercial uses. Again, everything that is allowed in the barn, and then we saw other stuff, right? So if we saw large dump trucks, or if we saw some other type of commercial activity, what would typically happen is we would open a, we would, we would take some photos, document it, open a notice of violation, and then begin pursuing remediation of that issue. So in this case, if we did the, if we were to move forward with the rezoning, which does not allow commercial uses on that, in the property. And we did some commercial uses, we'd open an NOV, and then we would start to track it for administrative citations. Administrative citations essentially are fines that encourage remediation of the violation. There is no, let me think about this before I say it. There would be, in this situation, no entitlement that would rectify that situation, other than another S U P, or excuse me, other than an S U P that is essentially a temporary use of law. So we'd probably ask Ms. Blackwell to come in and file an S U P for commercial use of the property, depending on how, how that would go forward. If that didn't go forward, we, we'd move forward with the administrative citations, again, which start really low, maybe given at a hundred bucks. But after seven citations, they max out at fifteen hundred. And we can go out there as many times as we see fit to incur those fines associated with it. We've had cases similar to that in the county and zoning enforcement cases are always in struggle, is the truth.
Okay, I've got Commissioner, excuse me. Commissioner Jones?
Gunner, with what we're, I believe we're charged with doing and trying to balance Ms. Blackwell as the petitioner, her request and still being sensitive to Ms. Cross's concern. My, my question is this, do we have specific plans about, other than the size of the structure that she's wanting to build in addition to her home, for her woodworking and everything? And, because it just seems that even at, I think, thirty six hundred square feet, nineteen acres is going to dwarf that. And I heard you say, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the materials that the structure is built out of don't necessarily have to match the home. But in terms of it being, you know, not being, I, I don't think that she'd build a new eyesore or anything, but it's just not gonna match. And so do we have information about how close to the home, a little bit more about that structure?
There's a building permit right now for the single family home. I do not believe Ms. Blackwell has pulled a permit for the accessory structure yet. So no, I, we don't have a site plan as part of this project. Again, if we change the, if we, she doesn't need a change of zone to build the house. So I think that's why the permit, the permit for the house has been pulled right now. But again, that's, as long as they meet, she meets code on the house, there is no entitlement required. So it would be the same for this accessory structure. Are you concerned about the materiality or the size?
Well, I thought, I thought that the lady that spoke, Ms. Cross, that spoke in opposition, it sounds like she's concerned about the size. But I thought maybe she's concerned about, you know, how it'll look from, you know, aesthetically, that it's gonna be some sort of, you know, large eyesore that she can see.
Gunner, I want to reel this in right now. We are here to talk about a change of zone. We're not here to talk about the structures. Am I correct or am I off base about that? This is a change of zone action.
I'd say that there is a, there is changes on action, but there is a nexus here because we know she's doing it to build that barn. The, the, the way
Don't want to get too far in the weeds.
I, I know, and I'm, I'm, I'm working, I'm following us back into it. So Commissioner Jones, the way I would answer that is whether it's the barn or it's the house, if she builds it to code, that's no different than anybody building anything else to code next to it. It's like saying you can't build a single family home next to my single family home because I'm gonna see your single family home.
Right.
So if there was an issue that we, that the commission felt was a necessity here, my recommendation would be to require some sort of screening or buffering. We do require screening and buffering between multifamily and single family. We do not by code require it between single family and single family, which is essentially what this is. But if you wanted to, and that was a specific issue, we could ask her to, we could ask as a condition of approval that, that, that either the, I mean, I wouldn't do it for the house, but I would say that the barn would need to be properly screened from, from adjacent properties. And in that sense, that would require Ms. Blackwell, when she pulled that permit, to show a landscape plan of some sign that showed evergreens, if that's how you so, that's how you stipulated, or other, or other screening techniques, firms, fences, what have you.
Well, bottom line, I don't want us to get into things that we don't need to get into in terms of precedent setting. But I can see the nexus, as you suggested, without, you know, wanting to get into the weeds on it. So bottom line is she can, it's compliant right now. Thank you.
Mr. Carson, this is Carol Blackwell, may I speak?
Go ahead.
The barn is totally surrounded by trees. There will be one corner, since they cut down the trees to put in the electric poles. The, they, there will be one corner of it that can be seen and it's the same color as the house. And I did reduce it from thirty six hundred to just under, just right at three thousand. There is only one room in the barn that's going to be an office. And I have owned real estate, apartment buildings and, and office buildings and residential houses for over fifty years. I have an awful lot of files that I don't want to lose, that I need to keep track of. My CPA says hold on to them for eight years at least. There is no conference room in the barn. There are no other offices in the barn. There is nothing commercial going on in the barn. I have, I have repeated that in four different letters, that there are no commercial activities going on in the barn. They're just hobbies and we want to build the beehives in there. So that'll be part of the woodworking. So the, the colors on the building will match the colors on the house. She, I drove by this address last Friday and I checked out some of the other properties that are surrounded by agricultural zoning and R one zoning, all in the same street, all in the same neighborhoods. And this house is not going to be able to see this, this barn. It is not two stories high, that is not true. It is, it is, I think it's either twelve or fourteen is all that it is, feet high.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other questions for the Director? I do see some hands up in the, in the public, and I'm sorry, but we've already closed the public portion of the meeting and I, I can't go back to that. So the opportunity to speak to this case was at the time that the public portion of the meeting was open and that, that goes for the cases that follow. So when we do ask for public comment, that is your time to speak. Once we close that, we're now between the Director of Urban Planning and the Commission. So any further questions from the Commission of the Director? Seeing none, excuse me, Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gunner, we've had issues with a, with a very large building in this same neighborhood and have the potential, it appears to encounter the same thing. Can you tell us where we are on that original large building?
The, are you talking about thirty two oh one Palmeroy?
It's in the Palmeroy neighborhood or right around there.
We're still in the middle of an enforcement case on that property.
And that could go on for a long time.
It's gonna keep going until we resolve the issue, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the Director? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion.
Motion to approve subject to staff stipulations with the additional stipulations of a land disturbance permit, a driveway permit and an erosion control plan.
So Motion to approve by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Miller. I see Commissioner Ernst's hand up.
I was just up for the second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on motion for, motion for approval? Commissioner Reasons?
Yeah, I'm just, I, I, I'm still kind of stuck on this three thousand square foot shop for hobby. That's big for woodworking. I mean, I've done woodworking for years and I definitely don't need three thousand square feet space to woodwork. It is a concern to build something that big in this area. And then to say you're gonna keep bees in there. And then now she's also just mentioned she owns properties. I, I'm concerned that it's gonna turn into a storage facility for storing all her property, equipment or property, whatever, for her, for her rental properties that she says she owns. So I
I believe she said she owned property. I'm not sure that she still
Okay.
owns property, but I may be mistaken, but
Yeah, and that's, yeah, and that's, that's a concern I have. Because I mean, if she, if she's doing that type of a business, she is going to be storing business stuff in there. And it's not just gonna be strictly a hobby thing, because I mean, three thousand square foot is very large for a storage hobby issues. So I, I have a concern with that, that, that's the only issue that I have, so.
If I may, Commissioner?
Go ahead.
Can you answer that question?
Yes, go ahead.
So she can have a home office without an S U P. But the second they start, and anything associated with a home office, emails, files, things of that nature, right? The second she starts to store something for that business, like furniture, or like, I don't know, let's, I'm going along with your line of breathing, thinking here, if she was staging houses, all right? She's got some furniture and stuff, she'd have to come back and get an S U P.
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
I, I just have a brief statement. I, I think this just sounds like an end around from what we denied earlier. Thank you.
Commissioner Ernst?
I, I couldn't agree more. But at the same meeting we denied her, we approved roughly the same thing, a two hundred square foot building. And I just wish we'd get consistent in what our rules are that we're enforcing for everyone versus this one hits me wrong.
Thank you.
So if this is no, then it's too big, but we need to be consistent.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller? Thank you. Commissioner Miller.
I was basically just gonna make the same point as Commissioner Ernst in that. I, I mean, my opinion on this is the change of zone. We can't look at the building as much. I get that there's a nexus. But at the end of the day, we've got enforcement to make sure that there's no business in the building or the size of the building or anything else. I mean, that, this is a change of zone, and I don't see a reason to not change the zone. Now, there can be arguments with the building down the road and all that, but that comes up to enforcement and codes down the road. And they may be back in front of us for, for an NOV or something, but I don't think we can control that.
Thank you. Commissioner Reason.
Yeah, Jake, just to, or just to kind of, the reason why I'm concerned is by switching it to, if I'm Ms. Baking's, tell me. But when we switch it to an ag property, there's no limit on certain, how many structures or even kind of the size of the structure. And I think that's the concern that I have is, I mean, she can build a normal, up to, I think it was a thousand or fifteen hundred square foot shop on a residential property, but she's wanting to go over that on a resident. And, and I think that's, and, and once you go to ag, there's like she can almost pretty much just do it, and I think that's my biggest concern.
But on the flip side, there, there could be three one thousand square foot structures built on the same property. There is, there would be no limit that, that can be done.
Correct.
So, I mean, what does somebody want to look at? One three thousand square foot building or three one thousand square foot buildings just to hit the minimum? So, you know, who's to say what? But Commissioner Miller's comments are right. We're here to talk about changes of. Further questions on the motion to approve changes of? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Ewing.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller. Muller.
Aye.
Pauling.
Aye.
Reasons.
Nay.
Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application, subject to the revised conditions by staff, passes seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on April eighth before the Board of County Commissioners at seven P. M. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was able to work with Mr. Evans. I did get him on the call, so with your permission, we will go back and call his change of zone application.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, change of zone application, COZ twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one. James B. Evans, change of zone from AG Agriculture District to R1 Single Family District for a single family home at eighteen twenty-five North Ninety-fourth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopting master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated March fifteen, twenty twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, inferments of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the one dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Hey, Mr. Evans, if you're in the audience, please raise your hand for me. I've got a James, a Jamie, and a Jamie C., so I want to make sure I've got the right person. So please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing it. I'm gonna go ahead and allow James to speak. Folks, if you don't have your name listed on your Zoom profile, you're gonna have to raise your hand so I can identify you. I've got phone numbers, I've got first names, I don't have last names. I need to know who you are, so I need to use, use the raise your hand feature to identify who you are when we call your case. It's okay. Mr. James, are you, or is that, are you Mr. Evans?
I'm James Evans.
All right, great. I got the right one. Okay. Give us your name, give us your name and address and tell us about your, your, your project here.
Yeah, I'm James Evans. My P O box is one two nine two five Cassidy, Kansas, six six one one two. And my residence is eighteen forty-one North Ninety-fourth. And that's my property. I have two properties, eighteen twenty-five and eighteen forty-one. There he found it. Okay. On what I want to do, I want to rezone it to residential. I've never, I, I've had the property, the property at eighteen forty-one since two thousand fourteen, and the eighteen twenty-five since two thousand fifteen. One of them's just under two acres, the other one's about seven and a half. I've used it for residential, never haven't used it for, yeah, that's it. Never has I used it for agriculture, no cows, horses, sheep, goats, other objects. Basically, okay, so. What I want to do is develop the property in a couple of years from now. And as you can see, I have a big piece of property. I spent the last few years cutting down trees. I'm an anti-environmentalist, I guess you're saying. I've torn apart a lot of trees, and it's a beautiful sight. You can actually, from the one property, you can see the, the woodlands from the front door, the house that we built there. And I have some of the best views in all of Kansas City, Kansas, that overlooks the legends. I go there every night and enjoy my dinner with a beautiful view of the valley. So. I have no opponent, opposed to neighbors. They just like, they like it that I clean up my property. I'm doing opposite of the case you just had a minute ago. I'm gonna go from agricultural to residential.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant on these two cases? Senator, is it okay to hear these two together?
Sure.
No, I'm talking to the secretary.
Oh.
I believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we'll just need two motions on each one.
Right.
We need a motion on each one.
Can I go ahead and call the other one?
Yes, please.
That it's in the record.
Thank you.
Change of zone application, COZ twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two. James B. Evans, change of zone from AG Agriculture District to R1 Single Family District for a single family home at eighteen forty-one North Ninety-fourth Street.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant on either of these two cases? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the public tonight that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to either one of these two cases? For eighteen twenty-five North Ninety-first, Ninety-fourth, or eighteen forty-one North Ninety-fourth? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff for comment. Director Hand.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hendrick, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Although this is the same entitlement request for both, there are small nuances that we'd just like to point out. For the first one, zero zero one, again, there is no primary structure, but there are accessory structures. So when, if and when this is approved to R1, those accessory structures are no longer allowed. As such, we've written a condition of approval that those accessory structures be removed if approved. If you recall, last week, we heard the Boza case for this, for zero zero two at eighteen forty-one North Ninety-fourth Street, and you can see it very clearly in this lot split request. So again, Mr. Evans is gonna split the property pretty much right down that line, and effectively have three properties all zoned R1. He believes in, in the future, he hopes to, to submit a future subdivision moving forward. So for this case, we added a condition of approval, and you can see it better in this picture. If the lot, if the property is split in two, the property where Mr. Evans lives, which was associated with Boza twenty twenty-one zero zero through, that was approved last week for two accessory structures in an R1 zone, where you're only allowed one accessory structure, again, it was the carport and the shed here. This property will access North Ninety-fourth. The condition of approval for this change of zone is this, what he's calling Track B. This future Track B will access Garfield Avenue. And with those, as Mr. Evans said, there's been no NOVs. There's a couple of old NOVs that have been cleared up, but essentially no NOVs. We've received no letters in opposition and support for either of the cases. We recommend approval for both.
Thank you. Questions for the director? Commissioner Ernst. Do you have anything? Okay. Questions for the director? Commissioner Jones. Need to unmute yourself, Commissioner Jones.
All right, that I did. Just want to confirm, I see it in the report, but Gunner, the commissioner is aware about the demolition that has to occur as a consequence, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion, and this will be on change of zone for eighteen twenty-five North Ninety-fourth. Twenty, case twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one. Commissioner Miller?
Move to approve, move to recommend approval for change of zone zero zero one, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion on motion for approval? Seeing, excuse me, Commissioner Jones.
My apologies, that was a mistake. No, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on motion for approval for case twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Ewing.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Pauling.
Aye.
Reasons.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone, subject to the conditions of the staff, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This case will be heard once again on April eighth at seven P. M. before the Board of County Commissioners. I will now entertain a motion on case number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two for eighteen forty-one North Ninety-fourth. Commissioner Miller?
Move to approve change of zone zero zero two, subject to the staff stipulations and comments.
Motion for approval made by Commissioner Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Healy. Any discussion on motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Ewing.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Pauling.
Aye.
Reasons.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone two, subject to the staff's comments and suggestions, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This case will again, will be heard April eighth at seven P. M. before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, that completes the change of zones and will now move on to the special use permits. The first one is special use permit application, S P twenty twenty-one dash zero zero five. Cynthia Slaby, home occupation special use permit for a doggy daycare for ten dogs at seventy-seven fourteen Roland Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopting master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated March fifteen, twenty twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, inferments of the case contained in the official file, the notice in the one dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Slaby, are you in the, well, I know you're in the audience. I've got you queued up to speak. Could you go ahead and give us your name to make sure we're pronouncing it correctly? Give us your address and tell us about your project.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is. My name is Cynthia Slaby.
Slaby, thank you.
Are you guys getting the same feedback that I get?
No, we're getting, we're, we're good now.
Okay, great. My, thank you. My name is Cynthia Slaby. My address is currently two twenty-one West Navajo Lane in Kansas City, Missouri. I bought the property at seventy-seven fourteen Roland Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero nine. In November of last year, I bought the house for my parents and had moved back here from Philadelphia in two thousand nineteen to be closer to them due to some health concerns. I have since fallen in love with the property and have a lot of experience with canine massage, canine agility, and canine therapy related to hydrotherapy and things like that. And I decided instead to follow, instead of staying with the American Academy of Family Physicians, I moved and decided I wanted to pursue a purpose in working with animals. And I have the perfect space, and that's what I'm looking to do. I would like to have no more than ten dogs at a time. The hours of operation would be ten to four P. M. I would be providing transportation to and from. I'm very aware of the peace and serenity and don't want to add to any congestion. Additionally, there was some question earlier about, related to the kennel operation, about frequency of membership or frequency of same clientele. I absolutely want to build a community, and I want it, I want very much so to have a very small clientele so that the dogs are the same on a daily basis. Additionally, I will require proof of vaccinations in order to attend.
Okay, thank you. I admire your move from people to animals. They, they're more appreciative, they don't complain, and they're, and they're non-political, so.
Thank you.
Probably a lot easier all the way around. Okay, any questions for the applicant? I am not seeing any, so I'm gonna go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone that wants to speak, so I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hendrick, complaining in urban design. As the applicant mentioned, this is a, a dog daycare for up to ten dogs maximum. We applied several standard conditions of approval, including no signage. As, as the applicant mentioned, part of their service is pickup and drop off of their dogs. There is a condition in, of approval that, that allows customers to visit the property in cases of emergencies. There's also a condition approval for the hours of operation. We are recommending two years. Staff would ask if the commission agrees with our recommendation of approval that, with their motion, they add another condition of approval. I apologize, guys, we forgot to add the same standard condition that we applied to the other kennel operation earlier, which is a maximum of three off-street parking spaces for this property. And in the time between that kennel case and this kennel case, I believe it was Ms. Jones who asked the question. I did confirm with our animal control that chapter seven does require all the vaccinations as stated by both applicants.
Thank you. Questions for the director? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Miller?
I move to recommend approval, subject to the staff, subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
Is the, okay, motion to approve made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner, I think the director.
I apologize. Could we get the condition of approval that a maximum of three off-street parking spaces be provided?
Commissioner Miller?
That's perfectly fine with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Armstrong is your second.
I'm good with that.
All right, thank you. So the motion for approval with the additional staff stipulation made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, any discussion on that motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Ewing.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Pauling.
Aye.
Reasons?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit, subject to the revised conditions outlined by staff, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This case will be heard once again on April eighth at seven P. M. before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, our next special use permit is S. P. twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six. Amanda and Noah Taylor. Special use permit to store drilling and excavation equipment in vacant horse stable slash barn at thirty-six forty-eight North one hundred and fifteenth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, the notices to property owners, and the numerous emails received in opposition to this application. And today I did forward two letters and a spreadsheet provided by the Board of Commissioners office that lists all of the calls or emails that they've had, what the opposition was, and their email addresses. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Yes, I've been, I've been contacted by numerous, uh, members of the public in regards to this case.
Same with me.
All right, and that's Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Taylor, I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and your, uh, current address and tell us about your project.
Uh, my name's Noah Taylor. I'm the owner of Solid Subservice of Business. Oh, do you want our home address or the address of the property?
Your, your current home address.
Yeah, one two 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 six South Apple Ridge Lane, Olathe, Kansas, six six oh six one.
Okay, and tell us about your project out on one hundred and fifteenth Street.
We just bought this place because our, uh, real estate agents told us it was commercially zoned, so we just said, okay, we'll take it. We had no idea going into this that we'd be, we just wanted it for indoor storage of equipment I own. We don't plan to run a business out of there or have offices there. For us, I mean, it's one hundred percent equipment storage for us to keep some of the big equipment that doesn't work all the time out of the weather. We do kind of a highly specialized drilling. So a lot of those machines might go out maybe three, four times a year, maybe. But yeah, we just want to keep our stuff indoors, and we're also wanting to do a softball organization if possible. With maybe practices indoor each night for a couple hours. Indoor practices would be December to March.
Well, let, let me inter, interrupt you, Mr. Taylor. Your application for tonight, though, is just for storage of the equipment, is it not? I don't see anything on this, on this application for a softball facility.
Hi, this is Amanda Taylor. Um, I had, I guess I'd asked to have an attachment or an addition to, to the application, and they had said it was received, and we've been asked questions about the softball facility, so I'm not.
I think the softball facility might have come up at your neighborhood meeting, but that's not what you've applied for here tonight.
Okay, so we can't do both of them, even though that's kind of what we thought we were doing from the ego.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, let me just, I'm going to interrupt you and go to Director Hand. Director Hand, are we here tonight to talk about the softball facility? Is there a way to incorporate this into? I'm assuming not, because the notice requirement has not been met.
We did not notice an S. U. P. for athletic fields. I think there's still some outstanding questions. We did receive, uh, some supplemental information this afternoon that we were unable to put into our staff reports, so staff still has unanswered questions, but as of right now, it has not been noticed for, uh, an athletic field S. U. P.
Right, so in order to hear that case, Mr.?
Yeah, I apologize. If we were just to confirm what exactly they wanted out of the softball facility, it might not need an S. U. P., but there's still some ambiguity from staff's perspective on that issue.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, why don't you go ahead and explain to us what you want to do with this, uh, as far as the softball portion of it, and we'll see whether or not it's something that could be done that doesn't even require, uh, a, a permit.
Uh, we want to take half the, the building and make it an indoor softball field for indoor practices and have hitting, uh, tunnels, pitching tunnels. And then there's an outdoor horse arena to the left, um, which would be to the west of our building. We were kind of just thinking maybe put it in like a infield right there. So, I mean, it already has lights and fencing. We might, you know, make a fence outfield or something, tear, tear down some of the horse arena, but it's kind of already existing. We just need to flatten it out and.
Who would access, who would, who would access this for those purposes?
Uh, to be select fast pitch.
And a select fast pitch, is that the name of a team or is that the name of an organization or?
It's in the name of a, uh, non, nonprofit organization. About a hundred and eighty girls total, ranging from eight-year-olds all the way to eighteen. We normally have to practice, like J. C. C. C., but it is like a Kansas City, Kansas kind of organization, so we just think it'd be great to have a place like that for little girls to go practice. The outdoor lights would go off by eight-thirty at night, and that would probably start happening from March to November, outdoor practices.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold you up for just a minute. I'm gonna go back to Director Hand. Based on what's being discussed tonight, I don't think this is something we can hear tonight. Is that correct? Yeah, we've got, we've got too much going on. If you wanted to. Use it for, for practice, that's one thing. You're talking about a completely different organization and, and operation on that field, which has not been noticed to the public. So let's, let's focus tonight on your, uh, storage of your equipment, because that's the only thing we can hear tonight.
Okay, um, so we have like twelve pieces of equipment, ranging from excavators, front-end loaders, drills, skid steers, mini hoes, and we have one concrete pump. We're wanting to store those indoors. And most of the machines, like the front-end loaders, they're usually, they never come back unless they need worked on. There would be every once in a while, I'd say, two times maybe a month, you might see a semi-in, semi-out. And we do have an old approach on one hundred and fifteenth Street, which was the old address. We would like to somehow use that too, so that we could break traffic coming in and out.
And what type of trucks pull the trailers of the equipment? You mentioned.
They're just, they're just little trucks. They're F-four-fifties with gooseneck trailers. There's only two of them that would be going in and out daily. We only have two trucks, two trailers. We're, I mean, we're a very small business. It's six employees. But some of the larger equipment, like the drill rig, um, that's a commercial style, a hundred and ten thousand pound machine, you know, that would be inside for, you know, most of the season. It might go out once or twice a year.
And would that, it'd be pulled by a different type of vehicle?
Yeah, it'd be more of a low-boy semi.
Okay, and the, the, the red Mack truck that's pictured in the staff report, what, what type of vehicle is that and what's that used for?
Nah, that's a concrete boom pump. So we like, you know, in the wintertime, you kind of need to have those indoors so you can fill them up with water, you know? But I guess it's, it's a semi-mount, mounted pump truck, basically.
All right, and there's only one of those?
Yes, just one of those. And that would park there every day. That would leave every day, and that would park there every night.
So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you with this question, but go ahead and continue on with your presentation.
I mean, we would, we would like to do some improvements too. I mean, we wanted to paint the building. We wanted to do garage doors, put flatwork in the inside of the building, spray foam the building, uh, maybe widen the drives a little bit down by the approaches on a hundred and, or Donahue and then one hundred and fifteenth, widen those and asphalt everything or concrete everything.
Okay.
So I mean, we, we're trying to, you know, paint the fence black, the surrounding fence black. I mean, we're not going to let it go to waste, but, uh, we'd sure like to be able to utilize, you know, a piece of property we spent our life savings on to buy.
Sure. Okay, and, uh, I also see a dump truck, uh, in one of the.
No.
The photographs, is that, is that one of yours?
No. No, we were just loading that truck. We were trying to find as many pitches as we could.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. But the other pictures are indicative of the type of equipment that you'll be storing that will need to be hauled to and from the property on either somewhat of a regular basis or, you know, semi-annual basis, depending on which piece.
Yeah, I mean, the, the big heavy equipment is usually out in the field, and a lot of times we don't want to pay to have it moved until the next job, so most of those are in the field all season long.
Okay. Did you have anything else you wanted to add before we open up for questions?
Uh, I mean, there would be some stuff outside, like some smaller items. We might keep like, you know, pallets or steel rebars, some of the stuff outside, but I don't think you could see it from the road. Just be laying on the ground.
Okay, anything else?
Can you think of anything?
Would any of that additional equipment be seen by neighboring property owners, group that's just sitting outside, pallets, rebar?
Uh, I, and that's, I don't think you could see it. I mean, you have tall grass. There's some areas around back. I mean, we don't really have anybody behind us, so.
And with those employees that you mentioned, would they be coming to the facility on a daily basis and leaving, leaving their personal vehicles there to, to take the other vehicles out?
I mean, we would like to have it where they could do that, but most of the time they just drive themselves to and from work. But we would like to have a base to park stuff at, at night where people meet in the morning.
Okay. Okay, anything else before I open up for questions?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, questions from the commission? Any questions from commission members? Commissioner Jones?
So, Mr. Taylor, uh, I just want to clarify that Mack truck, the red one that you showed, uh, a picture of, that would go out of, from the property a minimum of one time out and one time back per day?
Yeah, and it usually leaves at four A. M. and might be back, you know, seven A. Or seven P. M., just depends.
And then what are your plans for growth? I know you said right now you have six employees and a limited amount of equipment of, as we've seen in the pictures, but what are your plans for growth going forward?
I don't really want to get to be some monster company. I, I like to stay small and be able to have my hands and everything and be able to manage it better that way.
But does that?
I don't really plan to grow too much. I know what I can.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones?
Can, can you, uh, be a little bit more definitive? When you say not grow too much, does that mean more or less than like ten employees at some point or, because we're, that, that?
I would say, I would say less than, less than ten employees in the next ten years.
And would that require additional equipment to be purchased if you were going to do that?
Uh, I wouldn't think so.
All right. Commissioner Miller?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Taylor, I just had a quick question. Um, in the staff report, it talks about how this equipment can be moved from anywhere from six A. M. to nine P. M. It's kind of a wide range of hours for that area. Do you have more of an idea of when those would be coming and going, more set times?
I mean, whatever's convenient with everybody in Kansas City, Kansas, I guess, you know? We were trying to move at night, you know, where the traffic's not busy or during, you know, um, when kids are going to school or they're coming out of school, we'd try to move before those times where their traffic's a little heavier and try to not be in the way.
Commissioner Miller, you got?
Yes, that's, that answered.
Thank you. Commissioner Ernst?
I think I need a little more explanation. We went from just a place to park your vehicles on the odd occasion when they weren't out in the field, and we ended at, would it be okay if guys parked their truck there every morning when they came to work? That's very much running a business out of that location, which.
Even if there's nobody. If there's nobody there.
Let me go to Gunnar. Let me go to the director to see what they would classify that as.
Gunnar Hendrick, playing in Urban Design. Uh, it was our understanding for that this request, that it was for storage only. I believe what Mr. Ernst is describing is staging area, which is not a part of this approval from our review of the project. If that's the request, that's different.
If you don't want them to park there in the morning or meet there in the morning, that's fine. I mean, we just bought the building to really keep equipment in, so.
Mr. Ernst? Yep, I see your head nod.
That answered my question.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, I'm going to open, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that came to speak in favor of this application? Please raise your hand. And I'm looking for people who want to speak in favor. I've got three na, three names. Mr. Jones, are you here to speak in favor?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Eric Jones. I live at one two four 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 Farrow Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas.
And did you want to say anything at all about this case?
Yes, sir. Um, I, I've been a longtime resident of KCK for my whole life. Uh, I currently run Select Fast Pitch. I understand that's not on the agenda tonight. I personally know the Taylors. Um, I've been intimately involved with kind of their plans, uh, for the, for, for that property. And he, his verbalization to me is that he just wants to keep some property inside the, uh, the building. It's my hopes at some point, uh, to, to build a residence in that area, and I would never consider building a residence in that area if I felt like he was going to, uh, run a full-blown business out of there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you wanted to add?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience that wants to speak in favor? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in opposition? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start with Phil Noah. That's the name on the, what I see on my screen is Phil Noah. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Give us your name and address.
My name is Phil Noah. I live at forty-one fifteen Independence Boulevard, Kansas City, Kansas, uh, in the Piper Edition that is right off of Donahue and about three hundred yards or, or three hundred feet east of one hundred and fifteenth and Donahue. Couple, couple of three, uh, uh, observations. The concrete truck, uh, if it is going in and out of that building, is that one of the reasons why you're going to have to change a garage door? And also, for that equipment to be in there, uh, will that negate the ability for you to have softball practices in that building because of all that equipment?
And Mr. Noah, you're going to need to address your questions to me and, and all, any other speakers. If you have questions, those need to be addressed to me and to the staff, and we'll get you answers to those questions. We won't have a back and forth between you and the applicant.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, is that Miles Construction out in Basers started similar, and they kept growing and building places to, um, work on the machinery. I was wondering if, where do you work on your machinery and will you anticipate, will he anticipate having to do that? And then the other thing is, uh, concrete trucks typically leave early in the morning to go, uh, to do their jobs. That is a heavily trafficked area, one hundred and fifteenth. That is a heavily trafficked area, a hundred and fifteenth, school buses will come that route. And sometimes, uh, us going in and out of our neighborhood, uh, we have to pause quite a bit for the school buses, uh, early in the morning and afternoon and traffic coming home, uh, from work, going to work. Um, the amount of traffic are kind of concerned just, but, uh, I have pause about being able to put all that equipment in there and then later on him being able to use it as a practice facility that he'll address later.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, next up, I have Jamie C. Jamie C., go ahead and give us your, unmute yourself, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jamie Cochran. I live at twelve, two twenty Donahue Road. It is right there at the corner of Donahue and a hundred and twenty-third. Um, so my biggest question, I guess, to start off is going to be with that Mack truck. Donahue is a no big truck zone, and that is going to be your access to a hundred, or four thirty-five and K seven. So how does that apply with no big trucks on Donahue?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to answer that question because we did get it, uh, an opinion from Public Works. The no truck, uh, signs on and on the, in that area is so that that is not to be used as a cut through. So somebody's not cutting through from four thirty-five, cutting through to K seven. People, concrete trucks that are used for construction purposes or going to or from a business or storage facility are permitted in that, in that respect. So just if anybody else wants to speak to the no, uh, trucks on Donahue, uh, signage, that is what the, that is, that is kind of where that's coming from. It's, it's not to be used as a cut-through facility for people that are just dragging trucks through the area unless there's an intended purpose like construction, storage, or something like that.
Okay.
So I can, I can address that one for you.
Perfect, thank you. My other concern is going to be, of course, the fact that I know Piper's, uh, cross-country runs Donahue from the school, so Hutton, all the way up to K seven. So one, Donahue is heavily trafficked as is, um, with the fact that it has the access to K seven and four thirty-five just by regular vehicles. So then you're adding in all these other, um, big trucks or trailers carrying these, this equipment back and forth. And as he stated, the one, the Mack truck would come out daily, so out and in. Um, and I just feel like a lot of the conversation was very, um, well, no, now it's not this because we might upset somebody or now, and it's changing consistently and I, I'm concerned about what it will go to and what will happen to our community. I moved out to Piper, which I've been here my entire life. Um, and I've stayed in Piper because of the fact that it is somewhat the country. So bringing in a business, whether it's storing business vehicles or not, that's taking away from our country um, feel out here and our community that we have, which you're on and in an area that is horse stables, farmland. Um, everybody out here that I know of has at least on, on this road, this stretch, an acre of land, minimum. So a- and that's, that's for personal use, not, not commercial, it's residential, and I just worry about what that's going to do to our community, to our prices of our homes and the area itself.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, Steve McDonald. Give us your, unmute yourself, give us your name and address. Mr. McDonald? Steve McDonald? Okay, I'm going to go on to the next speaker.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Steve McDonald, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Give us your, uh, give us your address, please.
My, my address is that one, one, seven, one, eight, Donahue. And, uh, I read the, uh, staff report closely, and when I got to the, uh, the recommendation, I was, it, it seemed a little counterintuitive based on the report I read submitted by the staff. Uh, in the interest of time, I, I, I won't go through all the points I had made through the staff's notes, but I did meet with, uh, the Taylors when they had the neighborhood notice, and uh, I think the staff, they approved this with the restriction of six AM to nine PM, equipment being moved out, uh, on and off the site.
They want to make a comparison, Mr. McDonald, Mr. McDonald.
It's a concrete supply company, and I served, uh, customers like Noah. And, um, my hat's off to Noah for the business he's in and the demands of the industry. And it's a tough business and the, the restrictions from six AM to nine PM is, is not realistic for a concrete pump. Uh, Noah, Noah said a minute ago that it might be leaving at four AM. Um, it's my opinion, that's when that pump is usually on the job, uh, in the summertime especially. I think it, it, it it'd be leaving the facility more like three AM, and there's not enough pumps in this city. Uh, so he'll be kept busy, uh, until dark. Uh, if there is any growth, Noah's smart, uh, he's going to add a few concrete pumps. Uh, they are equipment operators, so whatever equipment they add to it, there will be an employee in a parked car there. Uh, based on what Noah, Noah shared a lot, uh, and based on some of the things he talked about, we can't talk about the softball facility. I have a huge concern about that because that's a, a club of several teams from eight and under to eighteen and under, and they're serious about their sport and, uh, I, 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 I fear of, of the volume of traffic and people that would come there. But back to the building, it's my opinion, based on what Noah has offered, uh, they plan on using that as a base of operations. Uh, he has taken him at his word. There was mention of an office being built. Uh, I have a concern if he divides the arena in half, how effectively he'll be able to store his equipment, and will some of it spill outdoors? He will need an employee parking lot. There will need to be additional lights. We're not talking about baseball field lights. Uh, Noah made a, a substantial investment. He referred to it as his life savings. Uh, that building has access off four thirty-five. It makes a lot of sense why he would buy it. And, and then, uh, sink more money into the investment. Uh, he was misled by the property, uh, about the property being zoned, and I feel bad for him for that. But, uh, I see this as more of a shop with a few pieces of equipment stored. Uh, there'll be a mechanic there, I'm, I'm betting. Uh, that concrete pump might, the fleet might grow, I don't know, but even if it doesn't, that concrete pump's going to leave early and come back at dark. And, uh, it's just not fitting for the neighborhood. I live right across the street and I too sunk my savings into the old Doc Carpenter place, and it's an idyllic setting and, and, uh, I don't think it has any use to be near an industrial type use for land.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Mark Evans. Mr. Evans, I've got, unmute yourself, please. Give us your name and address.
My name is Mark Evans. I live at three, five, one, five, North a hundred and fifteenth Street here in Piper. I'm about a three iron away from the, uh, the place that we're talking about.
Um, that wouldn't be my three iron, but go ahead.
Yeah, that's if I catch it good. Hey, uh, I didn't make it to the group meeting, the, the neighbors. I didn't get the letter, but I can tell you who's this is going to affect, if this would even consider passing this thing. It's the guy that lives next door to the place that works for the union, worked for the railroad. He's an engineer, works night and day and tries to sleep during the day. You've got a Wyandotte County Sheriff across from it, worker. You have two KCK firefighters that got letters, lives right there. You have a doctor of dentistry there. You have a real estate agent, BPU employees, and a bunch of retirees, and this will affect all of them. And, and these guys have just showed up for three months and they're wanting to be treated special, and it's not special. The, one of the eight golden rules established by the Kansas Supreme Court to consider on a special permit is safety. The Piper schools, I drove over tonight, there's twenty-four school buses that transport kids to school back and forth. That's in the morning, starting at that six o'clock till about eight thirty. And they go back and forth from the elementary school to the middle school and to the high school. They do that in the morning, they do that in the afternoon. And when we got low boys pulling in and out of there, these big trucks, semis, someone's going to get hurt and it's going to be the kids. And I don't even see how you could consider giving a special permit to this project. It's been a running target to get this fella pinned down. You've seen the moving target that's gone on tonight. If I was buying a property like that, it's the buyer's responsibility to find out what that property is listed at. Now, he threw, threw the real estate agent under the bus, maybe it wasn't right. I would never make a decision like that. And, and the real estate agents we're talking about, we got them here in Wyandotte County too, all right? A- and the ones involved in this, one was in North East Berry Road, and the other one was one oh eight something, something Grandview Boulevard out in Overland Park. And, and this guy is from Olathe, been here three months. He wants a special permit. The special permits are the people around here that's made this community. One of these people live right there, pays eleven thousand dollars in excess in property taxes every year, and it's going to ruin his place. One of the properties that touches up to his ground has a special needs student. Every day, you can see the small school bus come and pick this child up. It's the safety factor. It cannot be allowed. Now, the school board and the schools are on spring break right now, but we have reached out to the public here, the school boards. The safety factor is a big thing. I also look at the staff report, and you look on page three, number two. Let me put my glasses on because I don't see too good no more. Number two, you look down at the article. Use of drilling and excavation equipment is appropriate in areas with heavy industrial or mining and extraction work, not in the middle of farmland. Subsequently, the storage of drilling and excavation equipment is also better suited for industry-zoned areas, not in agricultural-zoned areas. Go to your also staff recommendation on page.
Mr. Evans, excuse me, you have one minute.
Yeah, one minute left, Mr. Mr.
Okay, thank you. Number seven, a- a- and also a little farther down on it. One of the several purposes of the zoning code is to separate incompatible uses and concentrate like uses with others. Storage of drilling and evacuation equipment is better suited for industrial-zoned areas, not in agricultural-zoned areas. I make my case, I haven't heard anybody that wants that place there. Thanks for your time, and I appreciate the commissioner hearing this.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Okay, and, and for those of you that are still waiting to speak, um, if, if it's, if they've already spoke to traffic and we've spoke to safety, uh, if you just please limit your comments, if you want to just give us your name and address and tell us that you're opposed based on previous statements made, Ms. Parker will just include that in the record, and we'll make sure that we have you counted as, as being opposed. So don't feel like you have to get up and say the same thing. You can just tell us that you're opposed for all the same reasons as previous speakers, and we'll make sure that we've, we've got you recorded. So I'm going to go to Daniel, excuse me, Danelle Collins. Danelle, I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Danelle Collins. I live at thirty-four hundred North one hundred and fifteenth Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six, six, one, oh, nine. I am uh, concerned about the development here. I live directly south of the property, not directly touching, but directly south. My concern is related to stormwater runoff. Uh, the equipment like this does involve chemical solvents, uh, any kind of synthetic oils that tend to get into the ground, either washed downstream by stormwater or into the groundwater. I have cows and horse and goats and farm animals that drink from a pond that is fed by the field stormwater runoff, um, to the north, which includes the property in question. I'd like to have that addressed to see if it, there could be a solve for it. And if not, I, uh, propose there's a concern to the health of my animals.
All right. Thank you very much for that question. We'll try to get you some answers. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go to Cindy Kuklinski. Hope I said that right. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Give us your name and address, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
My name is Cindy Kuklinski. I speak on behalf of myself and my husband, David Kuklinski. We live at thirty-six fifty-seven North a hundred and fifteenth Street. The barn and the property that we're speaking about is in direct view of our home. We built here twenty-five years ago. Um, so needless to say, have seen incredible progress in that time, including Speedway, well, you know, the, the progress. We have never, ever opposed or questioned any kind of potential zoning changes, but we do. Um, and I was going to speak to the traffic. I am concerned about the environmental impact, obviously about safety. Our children graduated from Piper schools um, and school buses are a huge issue. Um, and we haven't mentioned the erosion of the roads around here, whether they go up and down Donahue or Leavenworth or a hundred and fifteenth, or leave at three AM, or come back at eight PM. I think we all know that business is business. If business is booming, it's hard for me to believe, I am sorry, but it's hard for me to believe that one would not grow their business. Um, especially based on buying this kind of property and having these kinds of plans. So we are concerned about that, as well as potential, you know, I'm kind of going around here, but potential damage to wildlife. Um, but we're also very concerned. We have a great amount of our financial investment in our home that we built. My husband is a firefighter, was required to stay in Wyandotte County. He is now retired. But we remain here because we have faith, you know, that the Piper community and the, the ambiance, the reason that we're here will remain. The integrity of Piper really is residential, country setting. Um, and you know, it, industrial parks smack in the middle of this, I don't see it's, it's hard for me to fathom that we're even entertaining this conversation, an industrial park in the middle of this. Um, so the financial impact of this, the depreciation of homes, again, this is right across from our yard. We see the horses or saw the horses every day. Um, I can see rebar from here. I can see a hay bale from here, so I will certainly be able to see rebar from here. So it's a financial impact that this is going to have to us as well as surrounding neighbors. So really, I, I very much appreciate you taking the time to listen to me and
Of course.
Very opposed to this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ms. Kuklinski. And next up is Stacia Bradley. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
I'm Stacia Bradley. I live at forty-two. Yes.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Fifty, fifty chance that I blew it. Thank you.
I live at forty-two thirty-eight North one hundred and twenty-fifth Circle, and I moved to Piper area in two thousand and eleven. And the reason we moved to this area was because it's quiet. It's not a lot of businesses in the area. You know, you can go to the Legends for businesses. So I don't, uh, have children. They get on the school buses. But I do travel Donahue every day. When I leave my subdivision, I have to get on Donahue. Okay, there's a lot of traffic. It's one lane each way. There's a lot of traffic. So I believe that this would be an issue, uh, this business, plus as I mentioned, this is residential. This is our community. So I'd like to ask you guys, your commissioners, Karen Jones, Ms. Paulie, and you who are, who just, uh, introduced me. Would you want this in your residential neighborhood? Because we certainly don't want it for the majority that I know of in the Piper community. So I thank Mr. Evans for doing his homework and presenting such good information. And I am one hundred percent opposed to any type of commercial business on Donahue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I've got somebody just named Lois. So Lois, if you could please unmute yourself, uh, give us your full name and your address, please. Lois? One more time, Lois, are you, I've got you unmuted, you should be able to speak. Okay, we might be having some technical difficulty, so I'm gonna move on down the line. If we can get that taken care of, I'll go back to you, Lois, but I'm gonna go to Joanna. Joanna, please give us your name and address. Joanna?
I don't know what they're talking about me.
Joanna?
Oh, hi.
We can hear you.
Okay, everybody has brought up a lot of good points. I'm opposed to it too. My address is forty-four seventeen North one hundred and twenty-first Terrace. This is-
Joanna, what's your last name, please?
Wolf. And I love living out here in the Piper area, it's semi-rural residential. I have a hard time, I mean, there is the issues of everybody mentioned about with the traffic and stuff. I think it'll tear up roads, the roads, streets as well. And it just, to me, when I think about, I mean, there's horses, there's farm animals, you know, cattle, and, you know, and the school buses and everything, I just can't see in a business like this, industrial, in the middle of this residential area. Because it will impact all of us that live here, having this here. I mean, even right in front of this business, there's a home there with his horses there. And right across the street, you know, they have farm animals there too. And, you know, already I see he's got a big pile of dirt that's outside the horse barn that he's doing some work on. But it's just everything that everybody has said. It really will impact this whole area. You know, I can appreciate him wanting to build and grow his business, but, you know, to me, it seems like it belongs in more of an industrial area than in the middle of a residential area. And it will impact, just when I think about traveling on Donahue and one hundred and fifteenth Street, rather between four thirty-five and K seven, that will impact all of us out here.
Okay, anything else?
I think what everybody else has been saying too, I agree with.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next up, Kurt Cook, Mr. Cook. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Kurt Cook. Sir, go ahead and unmute yourself, and then give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can now, yes.
My name is Kurt Cook, I live at one-twenty-five-twenty Donahue. I do work in this industry, and the pictures you're showing up there, every one of them piece of equipment do move on a lowboy, and that will keep the residential roads that are built for residential cars and not heavy equipment, it's gonna damage our roads. And the other question is, when he says storage, that can be broadly interpreted. That storage one night, one week, one month, one year, what's that mean when you guys wanna say storage? I was kinda involved in making, going to K dot to get the trucks to quit driving in front of my house, because I used to have twenty-five eighteen-wheelers, and you guys have addressed that. I'm afraid if we let this happen, we're gonna have tractor-trailers, which you're saying are not going through, but they will be going back and forth, back and forth to his shop, and you call it what it is, it will be his shop. And the last question is, where does he storage equipment in this today? And then why is he moving it to here? I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Scott Holt. Go ahead, Mr. Holt, give us your name and address.
Scott Holt, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, it's Scott Holt, elevated forty-thirty-three Independence Boulevard. And, you know, really echoing the other neighbors, I'm strongly opposed to this rezoning. You know, just to state, and I appreciate Mark Evans, I think, put it best so far, but I appreciate all the other neighbors. My concerns are really also in addition, you know, the added noise and light pollution. And I think it was also stated about damaging the roads, extra debris, extra litter, all the things associated with a large business. So, I appreciate your time, and just wanna put my name in to say I'm strongly opposed to this, thanks.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Holt. Kathy Steiniger. Yes, Miss Steiniger, yes, we can, go ahead, please, give us your name and address.
Forty-four thirteen North one hundred and twenty-second. I just kinda wanna reiterate what everybody else said, I'm strongly, strongly opposed to this. I've only been out here a year, I've been in KCK my whole life, I was born here. I just lost my last home to improvement, and I don't really wanna see this come out to this area. Like everybody said, this is country. I like the ambiance out here, and I don't wanna see these trucks running up and down the street. I'm worried about kids, I'm worried about our community, and I'm worried about my property values. Thanks, and I just wanted to say I am opposed.
Alright, thank you, Miss Steiniger. Okay, Jane McKinley.
Hello, my name's Jane McKinley. I live at one-twenty-twenty Donahue Road. I'm speaking on behalf of me and my husband Gray. I've lived out here since nineteen sixty-eight on various portions of Donahue. I want to agree with everybody, statements have been made, specifically Steve McDonald and Mr. Evans. I would also say, I know we're not speaking to a lot of traffic issues, but directly, I live directly west of the property, and directly south of my property on the other side of Donahue, currently is a pretty large horse arena that's a working business over there. And they maintain things within the buildings, but I will say the traffic with horse trailers coming down in front of my property, which is, you know, just the next property down on Donahue, I have, there's horse trailers for lessons and all kinds of things that are going in and out of there. They start early in the morning, and they're coming in and out of there, you know, nine, nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night. So, I've already got that additional traffic that I see all the time on Donahue. I would hate to see this additional traffic. In addition to, I agree with all the other comments, all the other people have made, I've gone through, you know, Donahue Road used to just be barely a gravel road, one and a half lane. I've gone through all the improvements of widening Donahue, losing property to widening Donahue in the past. And this is just, this doesn't fit into the schematic of the things out here. It's also one of the very few areas in the Piper community that we have sidewalks, where people in our community can walk, and pedestrians, in addition to the, are explained with the cross-country kids. But it's a very active community walking area when the weather's nice, and I just think that that's gonna be one of the few community things that we have like that is also gonna be affected by this kind of traffic. So, I strongly oppose and I agree with everything I've already heard so far, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go back to Lois. Lois, were you able to get yourself unmuted?
Could I, I've spoke with Lois, and her microphone's not working, could I try to put her through my phone?
Okay, that's fine, this is Jamie Cochran, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and you're gonna put Lois on your phone?
Yes, one more.
That's fine.
Hello?
Yes, Lois, go ahead and give us your-
Lois Lattesick.
Go ahead, you're Lois Lattesick, okay?
North one hundred and twenty-third Street.
Okay, well, either mute your phone or turn off one of the phones.
Okay. I strongly oppose it. I don't believe that industrial businesses should be with residential agriculture.
Okay, anything else?
I strongly oppose.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else wants to speak? Okay, Lynn. Okay, you got to help with the last name, Propolish. Okay, I'm sorry, she's, we're gonna have to promote her to panelist, okay? Try now, and see if you can unmute yourself to speak, ma'am. I've lost her, it looked like Propolish was the last name. Propolish. She was using, okay, Lynn, are you able to hear us? We've got you queued up to speak, Lynn, if you can hear us, please give us your name and address. Okay, hi, Cindy, I'm gonna call on you, are you, go ahead, Cindy. Cindy Kuklinski, I know you've already spoken before.
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, Brad Hoffman is using our computers, so I'm gonna let him speak now.
Okay, this is Brad Hoffman.
My name is Brad Hoffman, I'm at thirty-seven oh-one North one hundred and fifteenth Street. I am directly across just east of the facility that we were talking about. I am totally opposed to it. I went to the meeting that night for the, all the neighbors and everything, and he said that he would, did not want to put a road coming out on one hundred and fifteenth, which now is said that we are gonna put a road out on one hundred and fifteenth, which comes out directly in front of my house. So, I'll be seeing the lowboys and trucks and whatever else coming in and out of there. And he even said himself, four o'clock in the morning, this is not what I signed up for when I bought the place. I've been here eleven or twelve years, something in that order, so just wanna, I agree with, agree along with everybody else on what their comments were, I'm not gonna go into that, but, like I said, my driveway will be directly across from this entrance on one hundred and fifteenth Street. Like I said, I oppose it, and that's all for me.
Alright, thank you very much, okay, I don't see any other hands up, one last call, anyone else that wants to speak? Okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting now, we will go to Director Hand for his comments.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. I think that there was generally some confusion on the staff's report as we were developing it. As the application came in, we understood this to be simply for the storage of large material. About two weeks ago, we started to receive quite a bit of, maybe a little more than two weeks ago, quite a bit of letters in opposition. And as we read through those letters in opposition, they were reflecting points that we did not understand to be the applicant's request. So, we submitted a letter early-ish last week to the applicant for clarification, based on what we understood to be misinformation. I think that there's been-
I'm sorry, Gunner, I need to go back to the applicant to address some of the questions.
Sure.
And I apologize for that. So, I wanna call upon Mr. Taylor. Noah Taylor, if you're still see, go ahead and unmute yourself. Just wanna have you address some of the neighborhood concerns, and I've got a couple of things written down, I don't know if you've kept track, but can you tell me, as far as, where do you work on the equipment? If there's needed repairs on the equipment, is that, would that be done on site, where's that done?
I mean, it's, you never know, it might be in the field, or we might bring it back if we have to wait for a part for months, you know?
Okay.
But a lot of times, they go to Wilkerson Crane to get worked on.
Okay, so it just depends on the nature of the problem and what piece of equipment?
Yeah.
Okay, and then can you address times for the concrete trucks? So, there was some discussion about concrete trucks usually need to leave earlier in the morning than the stated times, and I think even during your comment, you might have said something about four o'clock in the morning. Can you speak to when those concrete trucks need to be out going and moving in the morning?
Yeah, we just have one concrete truck, we have six employees. I mean, I think all the people think that this is gonna be some monstrous company, but-
It's temporary.
It's temporary, I mean, we would like to just have the special use permit for two years, so we can try to find an industrial place. You know, you can't even, if it's inside the building, nobody can even see the equipment. It's just, this is absurd. I mean, I don't know.
Okay.
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for something, and you have thirty people calling and oppose it. You know, it's just like, good lord.
Well, do you want us to continue on, Mr. Taylor?
I mean, I'm sure I know what you guys' answer is, you're not gonna approve this, so, I mean, why don't I just be out six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and figure out how to recoup my money, I guess?
Alright, well, I'm gonna go ahead and given your response, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the director for his comments. Director Hand?
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. As I was saying earlier, I'll just kinda take a quick step back. So, as we understood, this is, again, this is a request for a temporary use of land, which is for two years only, and the whole purpose of this temporary use of land is to find a permanent solution, as the applicant just stated, couldn't have said it more clearly. This is definitely a use that is only allowed currently in an industrial zone by rights. So, this is a temporary use of land for industrial purposes on a piece of property that is currently zoned agricultural. When, after the neighborhood meeting, we started fielding quite a few reports of, from neighbors in opposition with what we thought was misinformation, which after clarifications with the applicant and tonight, sounds to be more like what they're actually requesting. So, based on the fact and the frequency of, I would say, even if it's weekly, the frequency of that Mack truck up and down the roads, as well as the possibility that there would be a semi-tractor trailer potentially moving some of this equipment in and out of the property, albeit at a much less frequent time. We were operating and writing our staff report on the assumption that it would be basically these, you know, big F-four-fifty type stuff. Nothing, not too dissimilar from large agricultural hauling type of equipment. This sounds like it's more than that. I think at this time, staff would amend our recommendation for denial. If the commission did move forward with a recommendation for approval, we would ask that you include the conditions of approval that we wrote in the staff report, as well as some additional conditions, which I will leave to that point in time if that motion were to arise. With that, staff will take additional questions as needed, but we, at this point, now recommend it.
Alright, question for the director, Commissioner Miller.
Gunner, I understand the denial now, but I just kinda have a question on our special use permit process, because I get the clarity and all that, and what's not there, but I get that he's gonna say that it's temporary, and I understand that that's what staff's idea. But it's more of a process question for me on that, these people bought a piece of property with the intention of storing property on it and filed for a special use permit. Why are we not going through the process of saying, let's make this a change of zone? Because if their entire purpose to buy the property is to use it as a different zoning, why aren't we changing the zoning instead of a special use permit?
I believe in the pre-app, we recommended they not pursue a change of zone to industrial uses. This would have to be, I think, an M-two or higher, and one, it would be spot zoning, because there's no industrial land anywhere in the vicinity, and two, it's inappropriate for this use, doesn't meet the underlying land use, there's no industrial uses adjacent. So, the path forward to do what they want done is an SUP.
Which is my underlying point on the process of kind of, when you look at the area, it's just- Which is my underlying point on the process of kind of, when you look at the area, it's just more to me when we look at it, I feel like we hand out special use permits to solve these kinds of issues when in reality, if we likely wouldn't change it to industrial to begin with, why start the conversation? It's kind of my, that's just my belief.
Well, and if I may, I, I think that the way that I interpret this specific special use permit for temporary use of land is it's not two years and re, and re, and re-up every two years. Other SUPs go from two to five to ten potentially, right? This is two years period to find a permanent solution. And you've seen that in our staff reports in the last few months where we've been doing these and specifically saying, this is not your permanent solution, we'll let you store this stuff here, in this case, until you find a permanent solution. I will answer a quick question while I, while I brought that up, Mr. Commissioner Miller. Um, in our responses from the applicant, he did say that he currently stores this equipment in a different facility in Kansas City, Kansas.
And I understand all that and I thank you for the question. I, I, I was more asking just because typically when we see the temporary use, it's a rental or it's a lease. You know, we look at it, they don't own the property and so the owning of the property is what kind of stuck out to me on this.
Okay. Other questions for the director? Commissioner Reasons?
Yeah, I, uh, I'm a huge fan, of course, of businesses, but when I see these equipment, uh, going in a residential neighborhood, you know, I, I get, I get why all the, uh, property owners are saying what they're saying, you know? All this equipment coming up and down the road. I guess my question is, is if this is a residential area, why are we, did we even entertain a special use permit on something like this? Because you can clearly see this, this equipment isn't, uh, it doesn't fit this neighborhood, even on a part-time basis. And I feel like we're, we're throwing people out there saying, hey, you might have the opportunity, but then when you get this backlash from, especially out in that Piper area, you know, this clearly belongs in the industrial area, not in a residential. And I guess, my concern, why wasn't this shot down first before it even came to us? Because it didn't even, it doesn't even seem like it fits the demographic out there at all.
Great question. Um, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, I think there's two, two points that are, uh, informing that, one, they'd already acquired the property, so they were looking for a solution. And two, um, we're not the decision makers. Um, we try to guide applicants down the right course of action that we think would be best, both for them and the community and the greater good. And in this situation, it was not a change of zone, it was an SUP. We try to find solutions. Ever since I know.
Okay.
Other questions from the commission of the director? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion.
I believe this is me.
Yes.
Or Mr. Miller.
For sure.
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend denial of petition SP based on current staff recommendations and its incompatibility with. Bill.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you repeat the last part of your motion you cut out? I don't know if that's on my end or your end, but would you mind doing that for me, please?
As we progress through this evening, some matters came out that made it even less compatible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Miller?
Second.
Okay, motion for denial made by Commissioner Ernst, seconded by Commissioner Miller for, uh, incompat, excuse me, for reasons based on staff recommendations and incompatibility with the, uh, area or nature of the area, uh, being proposed, made by Commissioner Ernst and seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion on motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Reason?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of this special use permit based on the staff's revised staff recommendation and the incompatibility of this use with the nature of the area passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Alright, thank you. This will be heard again, heard once again on April eighth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you all for your attendance tonight and your comments.
Mr. Chairman, that takes us to our last item on the agenda tonight. Special use permit application, SP twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-seven. Ryan Barrows with Joe's Kansas City Barbecue. Renewal of a special use permit for the temporary use of land for a parking lot for Taco Republic at forty-six twenty Mission Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated March fifteen, twenty-twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in further into the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application? No.
Oh. Mr. Barrows, I've got you, I'm sorry, go ahead Janet.
No, I should say, thank you.
Alright, uh, Mr. Barrows, I got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please. Tell us about your project.
Yeah, hey, uh, my name's Ryan Barrows, I'm with Joe's Kansas City Barbecue. My home address is fifteen fifteen Hodges Lane in Raymore, Missouri. Six four zero eight three. Um, basically, this project, uh, we, we have been granted two special use permits since two thousand seventeen and, and in that time, we've, we've had a, a great kind of wandering desire, what we wanted to do with that uh, property. Ultimately, understanding the best use of that is for parking for the Taco Republic building. Um, without that parking, they don't really have enough parking spaces to meet code, uh, to operate with their, with a fully functioning business license. Um, I will tell you that we were, and I did submit the plans that, that we got, we, I had my architect draw up and we submitted to, uh, to committee, to the DRC, I want to say in mid-two thousand nineteen. Uh, so we got far enough down the path with that, that, that we had comments back to go through the DRC process and get this a fully realized parking lot for them, and that would become a permanent structure. Uh, and so fast forward then to, uh, March, basically this time last year, uh, where, where the time came for, and, and actually I had dialogue with the owner of Taco Republic in February last year, talking about the costs associated with this and how we were going to need to raise rent for the lot uh, in order to pay for it, because believe it or not, fourteen parking spaces, uh, on that little corner there costs quite a bit of money to get it to be aesthetically pleasing, uh, to, to meet the DRC guideline. Um, then obviously COVID hit and that's why we're all on a Zoom call today instead of, uh, in person down there in Seventh Street. So what I'm asking is for a little, uh, a little grace by the committee for, uh, the expenditure and overall cost of this project due to COVID-related, um, like I would say, you know, loss of revenue for both the landlord, which is Joe's Kansas City, who's seen significant drops in sales and, and business due to everything from including government shutdowns as, as, as well as just, you know, consumer confidence in, in dining out. So, uh, and then also with Taco Republic, who's seen a substantial, uh, decrease in sale. So we've got two restaurateurs involved in a, in a real estate, uh, transaction, if you will, that, that was slated to, to go down the way that, that the commission and, and the planning commission would have wanted. Um, and we were, we were on that path and then, you know, this happened and here we are. So we're, we're hoping for, for, uh, an extension of the SUP, just to get us, get us away from this timeframe. Let us build up a little more resources and, and then, you know, execute the plan.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff for their comment. Director Hand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Uh, as Mr. Barrows, uh, mentioned, this is for an off-site, uh, parking lot that has been previously approved through two SUPs. This would be its second renewal if, if it were to move forward. Um, we've reviewed the plans, uh, we've, we've decided that because the conditions of approval, i.e. the improvement of this property has not been met from its original nor its renewal, that we would recommend denial of the second renewal uh, for this case. That will leave Taco Republic with eleven spots that they need to find one way or another. They had previously, um, had a parking agreement for across the county line road. Uh, in Westwood, it's under, our understanding that that parking agreement's been terminated, so they'd have to find a location somewhere else. Um, if the commission were to move forward with a recommended approval, we would recommend, um, two conditions as a part of that motion. One, that they complete this with, they complete the construction of the, of the, um, uh, parking lot per their site plans and code within six months. They've had years. Um, as well as that they connect Taco Republic to this parking lot via a public sidewalk construction between the two properties. There has been a history of NOBs on this site, namely before they were in the ownership of, of, uh, Mr. Barrows' company. Uh, so those aren't necessarily an issue, although it is a, through the pictures, not the best taken care of. I mean, it's just an unimproved service parking lot, more than anything, right? Um, we would also note that, uh, there was one, uh, letter in opposition and that is the property owner at which we would need to cross with a sidewalk. So with that, we leave it to you.
Commissioner Ernst, questions?
Gunner, would you agree that other than an agreement and perhaps sidewalk, it's kind of a stretch to call this parking for Taco Republic? There's not a close proximity?
Um, it's pretty close. I think people usually park off of county line roads, so it's a little counterintuitive to go out that entrance, which is kind of not really an entrance to Taco Republic along Mission Road and then come down a way. I think people from Joe's, Joe's KC certainly use it at times if they're knowledgeable enough to do it, but again, that's how it gets used is, is half of it. I think part of it here is that it's close. It's within, how about this, it's within, um, it's not within a hundred feet, so it requires an SUP.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Muller? Yes, I'm all right.
Oh, excuse me. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Gunner, what would they need to do to come up to the original conditions of the original SUP?
Basically redo the entire lot.
Uh, what, what does that mean? I, I drive by this multiple times a day. I, I'm just curious what that means.
Sure, there's a, a fence requirement. If you look at the, in the staff report, there are site plans, namely landscaping, fencing, screening, uh, wheel stops, uh, resurface the parking lot. It's been restripped in the course of the last couple of years, so that's the only improvement we've seen. But the site plans included, uh, and as well as, uh, public improvements like sidewalks.
So the denial would allow them an opportunity to get this up to speed, or what would happen if we deny this?
They would no longer be able to use that property as a surface parking lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Gunner, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like you were at least alluding to, uh, their problems having begun before the pandemic in terms of they had an opportunity to correct what they needed to correct with the parking.
Yes, the first application was in twenty-seventeen.
Were, were you asked?
They also came in for renewal in twenty-nineteen, pre-pandemic. And didn't comply with those conditions either.
So really, these things should have been addressed before the pandemic, before now.
I would say they should have been built six months from the original approval.
Thank you.
Other questions for the director? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
May I ask a question of staff?
Yes, Commissioner Ernst.
Gunner, would there be any value in holding this over so you could discuss an approval and six months to complete it, period? And that would be the end of the road? I don't want to make.
If I'm under, if I'm, so Commissioner Ernst, if I'm understanding, are you, are you recommending a six-month approval of the SUP?
No, sir. I'm asking if we should hold this over so that you and they can reach agreement on exactly what has to happen. Six, we might approve it. I am not willing to make a motion for six months. Someone else may be, but I'm asking if there would be holding it over so you could reach a good, solid agreement with them this time on what needs to happen. Cause twice before, apparently it didn't work.
Those were not, those were not good, solid agreements, I'm assuming. Because they never happened.
Yes, sir.
Director Hand?
Uh, Commissioner Ernst, in all honesty, I don't think continuing for thirty days is going to change our opinion. I think we've been in contact with Mr. Barrows since before he submitted the renewal of SUP and mentioned both this sidewalk and those improvements and how we want them done post haste and, um, uh, again, I think that we're, we're just concerned that it's gonna be another SUP for two years and nothing gets improved.
You have thoroughly answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Polly?
I would just like to make a motion. Is that, is this the time to do it?
I asked for one previously, so yes, I would love it.
Motion to deny based on staff recommendations.
Second.
And, uh, can you, can you further state, maybe, uh, other than staff recommendations, a, a reason for the denial motion? Is it because they failed to? Thank you.
The petitioner, um, previous to special use permit approvals did not complete the work that they were supposed to do.
Alright, thank you. Motion is for denial made by Commissioner Polly for those reasons stated, seconded by Commissioner Ernst, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller? I'm sorry?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Reasons?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of this special use permit for the reasons outlined passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on April eighth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you. And Janet, I believe that's the end of our agenda, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Anybody have anything else before we, before I adjourn the meeting? Nobody eagerly awaiting to speak?